Hello, welcome to the Elwood City Revitalization First Town Meeting. We are here tonight for Elwood City. And I talk so loud, Tom, everybody will really hear me now. But I want to be able to thank everybody that came. And we have some people here tonight. I want to thank Burger King McDonald's for the cups and coffee. And Kelly and Water for all the water. And Andy, is Andy here tonight? Thank you, thank you so much. And it is a full house. And I'm really impressed with all of you. Because it is a joint effort, it's not just one person that's doing this. It is Elwood City. And that's what we're here for. The Elwood City Revitalization Group started a year ago tonight. February 5th, 2007 was the coldest day of the winter. And we had 50 people show up at ESP Bank. Today is the warmest day of the winter, exactly a year later. And I feel like God is just shining on us with all the blessings we can have. And you're all here. And I wanted to thank our city council people. Elwood City Council, where are you? We have Lefty DeCarbo. Ralph, raise your hand. Is Tony Court here? And John, is John Toddridge here? We've lost John. George, George is here. And Ralph, raise your hand. And Dom, I saw Dom Vicary, our borough manager. They are here. And I want to thank them because they came on board right away. And we have a cooperation agreement with them, and that's what it takes. Marilyn Mancini. Angela Valvano. And she's also on the ECR Board, we'll announce him later. We have our Chief Operating Officer, Chief McDonald. I think you're gonna have to get used to people just calling you chief. And Jared Gibbons, our State Representative Office.
That's me.
Right, Ray is here. And Jason Altmaier, our Congressman. His office, and of course Jared's in Harrisburg, he's in DC. But they wanted to let us know, what they wanted the people of Elwood City to know. They are behind us 100%. They are busy raising money for us. They are helping us in every way possible. It has been phenomenal. Our Lawrence County Commissioners. We are sitting over there. They were the first ones. Dan Logler, Steve Craig, Rick DiBlasio. When this was still a twinkle in our eye, they had the courage to give us the $1,200 to send in for our 501(c)(3), which is our federal IRS nonprofit status. They did that in the beginning. They were behind us. They're not gonna forget the people of Elwood City. So that is exciting. We received our 501(c)(3) status two weeks ago. Eight months ahead of schedule because of the joint effort of Jared Gibbons and Altmaier's office. So that is something, they know Elwood City is gonna do something tremendous in this state. We are gonna be the lighthouse of what small towns can do. And people will be looking to us in a positive way that has never been done before. And it's gonna be because of all of you and your ideas and what we are going to do here tonight. Okay. I want to thank the Elwood City Ledger and the Newcastle News. They have been great supporters of ours. You've read the articles. And I want to thank Eric Ryan, which is, where's Keith Venese? Okay, hiding. They're hosting our website. I was naive enough and dumb enough and computer illiterate enough to think, well, if you had a computer, you could have a website. Not so. His son, Eric Venese, and his staff are maintaining our website. You see these forms around here? Our website is on the bottom. It's www.elwoodcityrevitalization.org. There's towns that have been doing this revitalization for years and they do not have a website. We do. And it is spectacular. It's gonna grow as we grow. Plus, the logo that you see on all of this is designed by Eric Venese. And it is gonna be registered in the Library of Congress. So Elwood City, it has a lot going for it, more than people really know. And I hope I don't forget anybody here because it has been a really exciting year. Bill McNeese, they have been doing work for us. Everything is volunteer. There's no money. It's all people helping each other. Now, the three handsome gentlemen over here on the right, your left. EG&amp;G. I'm sure if you've been to our website, you've seen the tremendous work they've done. They've been in business since 1981. They've done over 80 towns. Slippery Rock, if you've been there lately, tremendous change. That is EG&amp;G. We have, in the middle, Rich Cleveland is gonna be our point man here in Elwood City. You're gonna see them walking around town, taking pictures, asking a lot of questions. Don't call the police, they're to be here. We have Dale Garrison, raise your hand. And we have Rob Garrison. They're not related, they've just been working together 20 years, so they look alike. But we want this to be your revitalization. And if you look the word up in the dictionary, it means vigor. We want to put vigor back in Elwood. They're gonna show you what they're gonna be doing in the next few months. We're then gonna turn it over to you. And I'm gonna let Mr. Cleveland take over and thank you all. All I want to announce, the Board, the people that made this possible. My Vice President, Dan Francis, Francis Architect, would you stand up? Lisa Kimball-Fox. Paul Hoison, ESP Bank, where are you, Paul? Treasurer, I made him treasurer. If we can't trust him, we're in big trouble. Angela Valvano, she's also a city council. Wendy Behrensfeld. Jared Gibbons is working in Harrisburg, doing his job. He's also on the Board and has been tremendous help. I'm Lenore Bezicki. And basically, I'm like you, I'm a citizen that loves this town. Kevin. Tom Sator from the Chamber. Patty Coons. Patty, everybody knows Cozy for Patty. Have I left anybody out? I'm here because some of you knew my father, Henry Bezicki. He loved this town. We were brought up to believe that there was no obstacle too big you couldn't overcome. If it needed done, do it. Don't make an excuse, just do it yourself. So we are here to do it. And I'm gonna turn it over to Rich.
Thank you, Lenore. It's really exciting to be here tonight. And it's a great turnout for this first planning public meeting. As Lenore mentioned, my name's Rich Cleveland. I manage the Pennsylvania office for EG&amp;G, which is headquartered in Akron, Ohio. And just in case there's any question, I am a Steeler fan. No Cleveland's, no Browns. These two guys, though, they're in the Akron office, so you have to take that up with them. Rod Garrison is a landscape architect and planner. And Dale Garrison is also a landscape architect and planner. We're here tonight to do our first public meeting. Three months ago, ECR entered into contract with us to do a planning grant, a financial plan, and an implementation plan for downtown Elwood City. And we're here tonight to get your input. Tonight's about you, what you would like to see in Elwood City. And we will take those comments, both positive and negative, and implement those into the plan from today to the end of the project. So we're gonna ask you for your input. And we're gonna, if you don't want to talk, we're gonna provide cards so that you can write down your input if you don't want to mention it. And we'll collect those at the end. What I have, I have a PowerPoint that I'm gonna show you, and I'm gonna go through it pretty quick. Some of you here tonight have seen this already. I have a PowerPoint that shows you three communities that are under design and two communities that are complete with the economic impact in those communities to date. Our goal and objective of performing this plan is not to make Elwood City just look good. We're here to create economic development and economic impact in Elwood City. And most importantly, create prime real estate location and improve the quality of life. And that's what we're here to do. So I'm gonna go ahead and begin the PowerPoint. And then halfway through, Rod Garrison is gonna sit down. And he's gonna go through some existing conditions that we've seen in downtown Elwood to date. First community that's under design is Bradford, Pennsylvania. I'm sure most of you know, that's in the north central part, almost close to the New York border. This is their downtown Main Street area. As it looks today, you can see, one of the things that we always look at are the overhead wires that exist in an Elwood City. As you know, most of those are moved or underground, except for the cross streets. This is how it looks today. And this is how it's going to look when they let bids this month. You can see the different, you'll see, and one thing I need to say is, when you see these designs, we're not saying this is how Elwood City's gonna look. This is how these public meetings turned out the design for this community. And you'll see the different designs in each community. But that was done through our efforts in design, but taking that public input and using that in the design. This is a vacant building that is gonna be converted into a market area. This is a residential area. Also in Bradford, they're doing an Elm Street program, which was a spur from the Main Street project that is taking place. This is Warren, Pennsylvania, which is in the central part of the state. The population of Warren's pretty close to Elwood City. This is their main square, Pennsylvania Avenue and Second Streets. You can see the triangular building and the architecture of that building. This is how it looks today. This is the design of that area. And if you notice the fountain, one of the things we look to do is create gateways and people space in our design. And you see the outdoor umbrellas for the restaurants and getting people into the area and taking away that gray field of asphalt. This is another corridor in Warren, how it looks today. If you notice, we take, you know, when it's snowing, it looks really bad. This is how it looks. And to the right is the Allegheny River, and you see the bridge in the foreground of the picture. This is gonna create a gateway to the river and to the downtown. So we can take advantage of the recreation that occurs there. This is another corridor area. And the design. This is a main intersection coming off of that bridge. And you see the gas station and the look of that station. And it has an impact when you first come to town. It's really the first thing that you see. And the owner has worked with the City of Warren and us to redesign the facade and the roof of the building. And this is the project that he's undertaking to dress up the building. Indiana, Pennsylvania. Their main street is Philadelphia Street, is how it looks today. And their design, and you see the difference, you have a concrete curb and gutter line and then a brick sidewalk. This is Seventh Street and Philadelphia, and it leads heading north to Vinegar Hill, which is Jimmy Stewart's homestead. And they're gonna create a festival area in this area for different events in the downtown where they can close the street off. This again, they also have received an Elm Street grant as a spur from the Main Street program. And they're performing residential rehabs and neighborhood streetscape to those areas This is Wayne Avenue, it's more of a commercial corridor. But in Indiana, there's, there was a very large junkyard that kind of separated the university from the downtown area. And that's being removed, and the college is doing its new student housing in that area. Okay, the next two are two that are complete. And at the end of these, I have economic impact information. I only did two, but we do have, and Lenore has documentation on most all the projects we've done with economic impact in the area. This is how it looks looking south on 173, the intersection of 108's in the foreground of the traffic light. You see the overhead wires. This is how it looks today, the intersection, the streetscape design, which you can't see brick here. What they used was stamped concrete, which you'll see in other photographs. But you can see the design of their streetlights and the trees. On the left is a schematic design before construction. And on the right's the actual construction that was performed, so you can see how they This is looking north on 173 towards 108. And why don't you keep an eye on, as part of these projects, we work with the residents and the business owners. Some of the things we need to do is secure easements to do work outside of the right of way. And you see the fence and the walls that existed there. This is how it looks today with the tree plantings and the new wall sidewalk and the luminaires and light scanners. This is a gateway area that we took advantage of. To the left is a bank. And there was a building between these two buildings that was torn down, and it's looked like this for 10 to 15 years. And we saw an opportunity for to create a pedestrian walkway between the two buildings. So we redesigned the parking lot and created a gazebo area. And the college and the high school did murals to put on the walls of the bank. And it just really came out nice and created a nice parking and pedestrian area to the Main Street. This is entering into town, how that parking lot looked before. This is how it looks today. There's a waterfall feature and benches and the landscaping and the sign that welcomes you to the village of Slippery Rock. And the economic impact. The first phase that we just saw was $5,175,000. The second phase is 90% complete, it's about $1 million. But to date, they've had two new restaurants open up at about $1.7 million. And they just broke ground on a hotel, about $10,250,000. And so for a small community, although they have a university there, they have seen the economic impact in that area. And the totals and the jobs that have been created and exist there now. This is Washington, Pennsylvania. Washington, Pennsylvania was a 14-block, $17 million project. And as we go through here, this is how it existed. The courthouse is to the left, Washington is the county seat. Their population, about 14,000. This is the schematic design. This is how it looks today in front of the courthouse. In the block of the courthouse, the luminaires have five lamps on them. The rest of the downtown have single lamps, concrete sidewalk, brick pavers, brick curb. This is the main intersection, Bow Street and Main. This is the schematic design of that area, how it looks today. This is the southern end of the project looking up. This is the schematic design as it was. And this is just up from that area, the actual construction that's taken place in that area. And then above that, the next block being constructed for the project. This is a historical George Washington Hotel. And the landscaping and lanterns that are in front of it. And the corner, to the right, the corner just below that. The building in the foreground, as part of this project, developer purchased an old YMCA, tore it down, and built a $20 million green building that created 1,000 jobs and has made a very substantial economic impact in the downtown. This is how the banner arms looked at night and in the day. And the economic impact thus far in Washington's 41, about 41 million. There is another proposed 60 million on the table. Different things that have happened. The anchor building through the Main Street program, an old vacant building was purchased and renovated. And there's four new retail shops in that building with residential above. Out of that came a loan pool from the grant, from the grant from the state for the anchor building. The money that's paid back created a loan pool for other merchants to borrow the money to do renovations to their buildings. And then the George Washington Hotel has done renovations in the amount of $3 million. So there again, there's been significant economic impact in that area. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Rod Garrison.
Thanks, Rich. Hello, everybody. My name's Rod Garrison. I wear the head of project manager in EG&amp;G. It's been my pleasure to be associated with EG&amp;G now for over 20 years, involved with many projects of the type and richness to describe to you. And it's fun, even now, for me to look at these photographs and these pictures of before and after. And really remember what those places were like when we started working with them, kind of at the stage where you are now. And then to see those photographs of the after. And to see the beautiful streets and the improvements and improvements of the buildings and the economic development that has resulted from projects of this kind. I hope looking at those photographs gives you a sense of confidence that this can be done, this large agenda of downtown revitalization. And that you're part of something really terrific. And this is the first night, and we're just kicking it off, and we're just thrilled to be working with you. It's my pleasure tonight to kind of bring us back to Elwood City and the project area. This is an aerial photograph of your downtown area and a little bit more. And those green lines on there that you may or may not be able to read from where you are generally describe the Elwood City Downtown Revitalization Project area. And it is Lawrence Avenue from 10th Street to 4th Street. And those same cross streets are a block in each direction of Lawrence. It's also 5th Street extending as far as Spring Avenue. It's 6th Street, also extending as far as 5th Avenue. And the block of 5th Avenue between 5th and 6th. That's quite an extensive area of street corridor to be addressed. And we start off this discussion with a brief list of the strengths and assets as we've seen them so far in your downtown area. Of course, downtown is the center of government and business activity for the community. Downtown is a major source of jobs and tax revenues. And downtown is a district rich in architectural, historic architectural character. Those are just three of the assets and the strengths that we've become keenly aware of in the brief time that Dale and I have spent here. Rich, of course, has been in contact with the Revitalization Committee for a while. But Dale and I have been involved really just for a few days. We're still kind of climbing that learning curve a little bit, getting to know you. And tonight's gonna help us a great deal more in getting to know you. But in the brief time we've been here, just a real terrific community. And a high quality of life, but you really can't get a sense of that from the condition of the downtown district as it reads today. Let me just take you through a couple of photographs of some of those strengths and assets as we saw them. Dale and I spent a couple of days here taking some photographs. And just to reinforce the point about the strengths, of course, this is the municipal building, the center of government for the community. You have a lot of really nice and traditional and some genuinely historic buildings with many of them having good businesses within them. Some of them even having activities in the upper floors, such as offices and apartments. It's a financial center for the community with several banks located here. I've just got a picture of a few of them. ESP Bank, Huntington Bank, National City Bank, and there are others. I don't mean to exclude anyone, but just moving through here quickly. Once again, some additional good buildings with good businesses in them. Just moving through here quickly. Some relatively recent additions to the downtown business community with this writing located down on 5th at Spring Avenue. So things are happening. I, just a marvelous piece of architecture here. I understand that this is on the market presently, but I was just taken by the character of that building. And another good example of a building that's been updated, refreshed, being used. And the source of, a major source of jobs for the community, a nearby employer to the downtown district, the Elwood City Forge Company. Only have a picture of the sign for this slideshow, but it's quite an extensive facility, as you well know. And refocusing now on the street corridor. This happens to be standing in Lancaster Avenue looking in an easterly direction. And you have been, over a period of many years, addressing some of the infrastructure issues in the street corridors in terms of sidewalks, curbs, and lighting in a phased kind of way. Some of these segments go back a few years in terms of when they were implemented. But this is how the downtown looks. This is the first impression that I had of the downtown district when I arrived here. A lot of opportunity, a lot of potential. Going the wrong way on the projector. What we did next, we created a short list of challenges and opportunities as we began to see them related to the downtown area. Downtown has some vacant and underutilized buildings, certainly more than you would want. Downtown has areas of aged and worn-out infrastructure. In those streetscape areas, as I'll share pictures of you with you briefly, you'll see areas that are worn out, that are deteriorated from many years of intense use. As hard as our downtowns are used these days, and yours is used every day, it's not surprising that things continue to wear out. And there are some elements out there that are worn and need to be replaced. And generally speaking, kind of a lackluster district image and vitality. There's just not as much going on out there as you and we would like to see happen in terms of economic vitality and street life. Downtown really doesn't, I don't think, represent the quality of life that is here in this community. And one of the things this project is all about is to kind of rev that up and make downtown really demonstrate what is available here in terms of opportunity and quality of life in this community and in the downtown area. These are just a few photographs of some of those challenges that we talked of. This is another photograph of Lancaster Avenue, which I have acknowledged has had some improvements in previous years in terms of the streetscaping and corridor, sidewalks, bricks, streetlights, so on and so forth. That's Lancaster Avenue. The next one is 5th. Lawrence, I'm sorry, Lawrence. That's how embarrassing, Lawrence. This is 5th going down to Spring Avenue. And the character of that This is 5th going down to Spring Avenue, and the character of that today. A lot of gray tones there, and it was on a gray day. Even though those areas have been reinvested in over a period of time in a phased kind of way, as you look at it closely, just walking one side and down the other, you do start to see, though, areas that have worn out, broken sidewalks, cracked curbs. And I'm just going to go through these quickly. There's no need to dwell on any particular one of them or talk about any particular one of them a lot. We have some of those brick that were installed many years ago. Now some of them are missing. Some of them are heaved and not sitting where they were supposed to sit. We have some furnishings, benches, waste receptacles that are missing pieces and parts and starting to wear out. We have areas where there were landscaping, where there was landscaping, where there were trees. Some of the trees are in decline, some of the trees are outright missing. This is where I presume a tree once was planted. Hasn't been one there for quite a while, it would seem. And there are areas where streetscape and street corridor improvements haven't reached, areas that are included in this project, I will tell you. And this is a portion of that. Now, this is in the automotive sales district of Lawrence, and we have... If I can get the... This is 6th Street that was never done, needs to be done, just as the previous area needs to be done. Spring Avenue is included in the project area. This is a street that was never done. The street, as I can tell, connects the foundry to the downtown district in a very direct way. Also, some really interesting and charming residential structures along this area, too. A street corridor that really does need to be addressed and will be as part of this project. A lot of the things that need to be done, that weren't done on these street corridors. We have overhead wires in many of the areas. Now, much of the project area has underground wires or wires that come into the backs of buildings from alleyways. So much of what is downtown now in terms of street corridors is relatively neat and clean. No utility poles, no overhead wires, and that's great. But those areas that haven't been addressed yet need to be addressed in the same way and the same manner, so that we can get rid of this kind of visual blight of these old utility poles and these wires. And I think I've got one more photograph of that. Yeah. And I'm sure when we talk to the utility companies, we're going to be finding that a lot of these facilities are outdated, need to be upgraded, and that's really the best time to address and put forth the idea of undergrounding or relocating. Also gives you the opportunity to upgrade the system. In those areas where street improvements have not been done, we have these, I call them highway-scale street lights. They're not historic style, they're not pedestrian scale, they're really not appropriate to the downtown area. Now, these days, you can light quite well and appropriately, not only the sidewalk areas, but also the streets using an historic-style fixture, much as you've used in other portions of the downtown already. But these areas that we're looking at here have not been done. And you can see the sidewalk deterioration, the curb deterioration in those areas. And I'm not going to linger on any of these. You can see them for what they are, and you don't have to look very hard or long to find these conditions throughout the project area, really, not just in the areas that weren't previously addressed by streetscape improvements. One of the things I'm a strong believer in is improving the parking areas that visitors use when they come to downtown. Generally speaking, parking areas are where you land first, and however good or badly those parking areas look has a lot to do with the first impression anyone has about not only the downtown but the community, because, well, downtown really is everyone's neighbor. It's kind of the living room, the front room to your community. So how good it looks or how poorly it looks reflects on the community. And that applies to parking, too. And this parking really isn't very attractive. As a matter of fact, if it was improved, I would guess we could also get a few additional parking spaces, a little bit more efficiency out of these areas, in addition to making them better lighted, more attractive, and better serve the downtown district. Here's an opportunity that Dale and I noticed. Didn't take us long to see this. The railroad trestle, you know, just kind of gray and rusted. We can't wait to start looking at this in terms of how this could be coordinated and improved as part of the overall design for the revitalization of the downtown area. These kinds of facilities are just, well, to some extent, unique. Not every community has this type of a structure in this downtown district, and they're very fun to deal with and a real opportunity. We're going to be looking at that with a great deal of interest. Downtown has some missing teeth in its smile, if you will. There are vacant lots that have stood vacant for quite a while for a variety of reasons. Maybe the overriding reason is people perhaps don't have confidence enough in the downtown district and its future to take a chance on buying that lot or leasing that storefront and putting a business into it. We kind of have to demonstrate some confidence, some renewed interest in revitalization in the downtown area to get those folks to take that chance, to take out that lease or buy that lot and put a building into it. And not every lot like this needs a building. This lot right here might be better used as a mini-park or a green space in the downtown area, perhaps to connect the downtown district to the parking, which there is so much of just on the other side of that fence as you walk down to the next street. So we're going to be looking at some of these vacant lots with the opportunity as a pedestrian connector between the downtown and where the parking is located. And we do have a few buildings that don't look as good as they should and don't have businesses in them or perhaps anything going on in them at this time. And one of the services we're going to be providing is demonstrating some storefront facade improvements as part of the project. And I think one of the... I don't think I know, one of the major goals of this project is to encourage businesses to locate in the downtown area. Take, as I said, take out a lease in one of these buildings, buy one of these buildings, and install a really good business in the building, perhaps apartments or offices upstairs as well. Generally speaking, give you an overview of what the project is all about. A comprehensive planning approach to replacing and upgrading worn-out infrastructure in the project area, improving and enhancing district image and vitality, and creating prime real estate location conducive to economic development and quality of life. Those are three tenants, three goals, three objectives of this project. And they're similar to the goals and objectives of other communities where we have worked. And I feel confident that working with this hard-working group of folks on the Revitalization Committee and seeing such an outpouring of interest here, I think we... Somebody counted over 150 people here, and I don't think Rich mentioned it, but I've been doing this work for over 20 years, and you have set the record for attendance at our initial town meeting. So we applaud you for that, and it's a great demonstration of your commitment and interest in a project of this kind. Just a brief overview, so this is going to go quickly. I thought you would be interested to see an outline of our classic, if you will, four-step process that moves these projects from concept to completion and from design to construction, if you will. It's a four-step process. Step one being the design development plan, reaching a consensus amongst all you stakeholders and members of the community on the vision for downtown. What do we want downtown to look like? What do we want it to be? What improvements do we want to see implemented in the downtown area? Step one actually has three steps, kind of an A, B, and C. A being an analysis stage where Rod and Dale, as I said, learn as much as we can possibly learn about the project area and your community in terms of needs and opportunities. We'll be pulling that together, and we'll be bringing that back to you at a subsequent town meeting to share. Step one B is the development of several concept designs. We call it, that's step, concept development, where we develop and we bring back to you ideas, different ways of doing things, different design scenarios for improvements in the downtown district. We bring that back to you to get your input and give us direction on what you like and what you don't like, what we've got right and what we need to work a little bit more on. Finally, step one C results in that design plan, that plan that generally captures the vision of what improvements are desired and what downtown should be in the near future and kind of setting the tone for what it needs to continue to be as we march forward for 20 years. Step two is very important, and quite frankly, it's why a lot of these types of plans just end up in a book parked on a shelf and don't go any farther. These aren't our plans. I'm talking about other plans done by other firms. Our plans kind of leap off the drawing board and get built because we pay particular attention in the financial plan. The financial plan consists of determining what the vision of improvements will cost. We call that the use of funds. And then matching that up to a list of probable sources of funds, both within the community and outside the community in terms of grants, foundations, donations, other sources of funds. And it's that critical step of matching the use of funds with the source of funds that really leads these projects to construction. And step three involves getting commitments from those sources of funds outside your community in terms of writing grant applications, accompanying you to meetings or providing presentations to support you when you reach outside the community to federal grants, state grants, other sources of funds that you don't have right here locally. We support you in that. We write the grant applications for you. Quite frankly, it's in our healthy self-interest as well to see you assemble the monies and get the firm commitments from all those sources to proceed with, if not the entire project at once, at least a substantial Phase One, then Phase Two and Phase Three until all of the areas are addressed. Step four, we're not currently under contract for step four now. That would be in a subsequent agreement. But step four amounts to the preparation of the construction drawings, the bidding drawings, everything necessary in terms of plans and specifications to bid the Phase One project area improvements to qualified contractors, and ultimately award a contract and see the construction improvements take place. This, step one through three, is generally speaking, a six-month process, just to let you know. Kind of two months on each one of those steps, so... Well, six to nine months. It can take a little bit longer. At this point, after sharing that with you, I want to bring you back using this photograph of the existing conditions downtown, because it's time for us, Rich, Rod, Dale, to stop talking for a while and listen to you tell us what you would like to see done differently or improve downtown. I'm going to pose to you a question, and I want you to think about this briefly, and then we're going to give you all an opportunity to speak, those who want to, or those of you who want to fill out cards, you can do that, too. But the question is, if money was not the object, if we didn't have to worry tonight about how we would pay for anything we would ultimately like to see done downtown, what would you, each of you, like to see done to improve the downtown district? And that's the question. And we want to hear your ideas, both positive and negative. And we're not going to debate ideas tonight. We're going to record all the ideas. Dale's going to write them down over there on this piece of paper. And as Rich said, we're going to revisit these comments all through the process to make sure that we're on track with what you tell us tonight you want to see done downtown in terms of improvements or changes.
Something that you can mention, if you've been watching the town, and we have, I feel, high-traffic and semi-trucks that come through our town. So, and I know we have the truck routes, which would be like on railroad avenue, you know, along with that parking lot area it was. So in your designing, I think we have to make sure that we have those signs that the truck drivers know they're about to come down Lawrence Avenue, and some of them still do. And also, for the truck routes, make them wide enough so they can make their turns and not... Probably where those corners that you see that are all dug up is probably done by some of these semi-trucks that are making turns and, of course, going over to the edge. So I just, in watching what you're saying and looking at the screen, that's an item I think that has to be addressed.
I was concerned about truck routes also. It seems to me that we ought to be able to move trucks through town a lot better than we do. I was thinking about perhaps improving Factory Avenue, Beaver Avenue, and having those specific truck routes that perhaps take us as far... They're coming in from going towards west, to go down as far as we can, down to 13th Street if we can, and improve the bins. Trucks, I see trucks coming up onto Subway, trying to make turns onto Lawrence Avenue. And it's just extremely difficult. It slows down traffic, and if one truck gets through the light, cars are still stacked up behind it. So truck routes is a very important thing. Another thing in terms of traffic, and I don't know how possible this is because it involves pedal on exposed, but we ought to do a feasibility study to determine whether it would be advantageous to make Lawrence Avenue a one-way street, either go west or come down east. And also on Lawrence Avenue, to accommodate parking better, that maybe on one side you have diagonal parking and no parking on the other side. Pretty much that down at Beaver, I like that. And I say that because older people, anybody, it's more difficult to do parallel parking. If you did diagonal parking, where you can pull in and back out, and if only on one side of the street, it might be better, particularly for older people. And I think we'd get more people downtown, to shop downtown, and more people would be spending more money, but more money means renovation. So that's something I was concerned about as old as I am, watching traffic through this town for many, many years. I think traffic patterns ought to be one of the main stages of your work, because that has everything to do with people coming into town, people leaving town, moving trucks through town, so that, and cars, that's what I'm going to say.
I know as someone who works in this town and has clients that come to where I work, sometimes I'll be coming to work from where I go, 10, 11 o'clock. It's not always easy finding a parking space. I don't know if you could do it aesthetically, but I think maybe a parking garage or something, if it could look good enough, might work. I know I always have clients who park half a block away, or there's an abandoned old building, drug pharmacy, that a lot of people are parking there now, but I'm sure that'll be taken care of. I think some kind of parking garage might be a good idea, too, depending on if the other parallel, getting rid of that will give us enough parking space.
One of the issues I've always felt was important was all of our main thoroughfares that come into town, basically like 2nd Street coming in from Park Gate. Those are your first impressions of Elwood City. And I think those really need to be addressed, because it's fantastic to have a nice-looking business area, but the impression you're giving is that the business owners are taking care of their property and we're not taking care of the rest of the community. So I think it's very important that those areas are addressed.
At one of our meetings, we had discussed about trying to reattract some of our citizens that went after California, Florida, made their living and everything. Now they're the senior citizens. We want to attract them back into the community. But as Elwood being a landlocked community, so to speak, redevelopment of housing for these senior citizens is almost an impossibility. However, if you look down Lawrence Avenue, and you look at the upper floors of those buildings over there, I would like to see those upper floors developed into loft apartments so that the senior citizens have some... so that the seniors have someplace to go, and it'll be right downtown for them. And since we have untold amounts of money to do that, as you've said, I don't see it to be too big of a problem. But this is my idea of bringing people back to Elwood City and developing it downtown.
That goes along with one of the things I want, a little bodega, little grocery store deli combination, so people downtown that live downtown have a place to shop, people that work downtown have a place to run in, get their stuff before they go home, and...
Yeah, I don't know how to address this, but Elwood City is unique, because you kind of meander through town. There's real no entrance or exit. If you want to get to the downtown, I mean, Lawrence Avenue ends on one side of the town, and you really, people get lost there. I mean, have you thought of anything on how to draw people into that area? A couple people have talked about semi-traffic and town looking good coming in, but I think you might need a figure and way to draw people in, shoot them down, and get them out of town better than exist right now.
I have a couple ideas. One would be that there would be an area where something like a farmer's market could happen. Right now, there's not really currently an area that would facilitate that. Another thing is, that goes with the streetscaping, is street signs. Having been pretty new to the community, there's definitely a lack of street signs, so if you don't know where you are, and you don't happen to look to the right side of the street at the right moment, even in the downtown area, you might miss where you are.
I know the door's ready for me, but feasibility study. Are we going to make a study of the population growth or the population downside of Elwood? We're an aging community. Our young go to college, they don't come back. So first study in my book would be, what type of community are we going to have today, five years from today, 10 years from today? And we build the structure around that, and not just about what we believe is going to be pretty. I don't know how you're going to do a truck. I watch trucks all day long online, receiving your turn, hit stop signs, hit lights, and it's almost impossible for these trucks to make a turn anyway. But the point is, the feasibility of the town, the population, the aging community, me, okay? The young getting, going to college and never coming back here, except to visit. This is what we really have to address. Then the facade to make it pretty will work, but nobody's going to come to this town if we make it just pretty.
I think they ought to make Beaver Avenue one-way, all the way, and have the trucks stay off of Lawrence Avenue, make them go back Beaver. I think too, that people don't shop in Elwood because they have to pay $5 if their meter runs out. Nobody's going to shop in Elwood, wouldn't have to pay that much. Everybody goes to the malls where they can park free. I think too, that the landlords that own the buildings on Lawrence Avenue ought to put some apartments up in there and dress them up. There would be more people that would be living in town and that would be shopping in town, especially some of the elderly maybe that don't drive. And on the end of the bridge, where I suggested years ago to a councilman where they could put them in any park, there was one in there earlier. They said it was too much money, so it's blacktop now, and everybody puts their cars in there for sale. And in the summertime, the teenagers hang out there, and they have garbage cans there that overflow. I would have myself donated shrubbery and trees to put in there if they had put a small park in there. There was one in there years ago.
I think Elwood City has a unique opportunity. We are 18 miles away from one of the most developing areas in the eastern part of the United States. There's between 7,000 and 10,000 jobs coming to Cranberry in the next three to five years. We have a position where we have probably the most affordable housing within a 30-mile area of that. But one of the big problems I see is, one is, when you go on the main east-west corridor from Zillia Noble to Elwood City, if you don't know Elwood City's here, you'll never find it. You go right around it and across the Fifth Street Bridge, and away you go. And the second thing that would bring people into this community is, do we have a competitive educational system with the likes of North Allegheny, Butler, Senka? Because people that are moving, professionals that are moving into this area, that is one of the most important things they look for, is the quality of education for their children. And I think something along those lines is something very important to look at.
Going along with what he said, coming off the four lane onto Second Street needs to be addressed right at the four lane, because it looks so bad, and you don't know where Elwood City is unless you're from here. You just continue on to Fountain Avenue across Fifth Street, so that area needs to be looked at also.
I guess what I wanted to say is, I understand, or I think I understand, that with the beautification process, the thinking is, if we build it, they will come. And I'm hoping that's true, because I am a business owner here, and I plan to be here for a while, and I would like to expand. I agree 100% with Mr. Frisk. I would move uptown and buy a building and renovate it. There's no parking. I have to have parking. So I guess my question is, or my thought, if it's beautified, and it's pretty, and it's feasible, we do have a lot to offer here, what will come to bring people to Elwood? You go to Slippery Rock, it's beautiful, college town, they have a very nice microbrewery there. That's honestly why I would go to Slippery Rock. But we don't really have anything to draw somebody to come to Elwood. And we've been all waiting for years, as was said before, for us to be the bedroom community of Cranberry Township, which it's ridiculous that we're not. So whatever we need to do to facilitate that, and if it begins with beautification, let's do it. But let's make sure that we go through the whole process and not stop.
And don't have to go up to the hospital or out of town or anywhere else and just have their medical care taken care of there and walk to the pharmacy. Everything could be in a self-sustained environment. I think they have that in other places in the United States and Europe and all. You can have walking tracks, jogging tracks, all types of things that would be nice.
We all have to go to Newcastle for services, maybe bring some of those down into town, where we can, you know, have some of the local county jobs instead of us having to go to Newcastle anytime we need some county services. The people on downtown, of course, that own the buildings, maybe, I don't know if a lot of them are out-of-towners who aren't real responsible for the upkeep of the buildings, maybe the maintenance, the facade of the buildings, but maybe some incentives for them to put some money into the building and keep it up for, you know, the aesthetics looks of the place. Because a lot of the buildings are architecturally nice, but they need to be updated, cleaned up, kept up with. But I would think that the elderly living downtown, or even like the lofts for the young kids who may be wanting to stay local, having a nice high-rise apartment, so to speak, even though we don't have high-rises, you know, second and third floor living, affordable, you know, maybe then we can get a grocery store downtown, or a little deli, or a farmer's market, maybe even a shoe store someday will decide to move in. But getting people to come into town often, living in town, and of course, spending their money in town, making everybody else want to put a business in downtown. But I'd like to see those, the culture of the district. You can have music, different local musicians and bands just coming in and performing on the weekend nights, Friday, Saturday nights. That may attract a lot of people to come downtown. You can eat at the local dining halls, and everybody, of course, you spend money in town, it stays in town.
One of the things he said about the theater, I'd like to see a movie theater, even if it's one screen and a stage used for other things, plays in advance. People have been giving me a list. Parking, of course, is up there. Restaurants. Any restaurateurs here tonight? Remember, this is a time to buy buildings and restore them, you'll get money back on your dollar. But restaurants that stay open after 9:00, we were talking tonight, where can we go get a bite to eat after we're done? We're going to come to somebody's house, that's what we're going to do. The light poles, to be have speakers on them, so at Christmas time, there's going to be music throughout the town. Block parties, free concerts. Damn, there's someone behind you. Oh, okay. So think about what you do outside of town. Why do you go outside of town? And could we do it here?
While Lenore's taking that over, the comment came up about existing buildings in town, and there's a percentage I think everyone needs to realize. Talking about existing buildings and land and building owners taking care of their buildings, when the study was done about existing buildings in town, we found out that over 20% of the downtown buildings are not owned by people who live in the Elwood area. So a lot of the buildings you're seeing in the downtown that are not being taken care of, that are not being maintained, that are not being well repaired, are because they are owned by people who live outside of town. It's one of the things that we want to take a look at, it's one of the things we'd like to correct, that's one of the things that we hope that people in time will do something about. It's a good opportunity for someone to come in, try to buy some of these buildings and get ownership back of these buildings by people who live in the community, who have pride in the community, and who want to bring that ownership back in the community, so that these buildings can be restored, so that some of these buildings that are falling apart can be either torn down, can be restored, or something can be done at those locations. But just so you're aware, over 20% of these buildings in downtown are not owned locally.
This is just a suggestion, is if you, any of you have been down in downtown Beaver, when you walk, whenever the street signs change, you'll hear like birds playing, and it's, it helps for the vision impaired people, plus when you're outside, it just kind of makes you feel good about where you're at, where you're shopping at, and plus it helps our seniors with, that have, that are vision impaired. Another thing too, I think would be nice is in the vacant areas, not in the main part of town, but on the side roads and the vacant lots, the gap in the teeth, so to speak, to bring families together and the community, you know, the community together, where parents can go out with their kids, is maybe have a dog park or something like that on the side, to where that can be a selling feature for the businesses that are going to be, that Westinghouse, it's going to be coming into Cranberry, that can bring, you know, as an attraction to Elwood, for people to come and buy the great homes that are here in town, and get families, you know, active in doing community family get-togethers, because you don't see much family stuff anymore. So that's just my thought.
The gentleman right over here said something about the school district, about the businesses in town. Well, again, there's a bunch of businesses right in this town that will grow. Eric Ryan, the McElwains, the Forge, you name it, and they've all grown, and that's the same process a lot of businesses have moved out. As far as the school district is concerned, we have one of the finest school districts in western Pennsylvania. The difference is, we don't have a good PR factor for it, but we have a bunch of administrators and we have a bunch of teachers that really care about the kids. The thing is, that we teach them good, we teach them too good, and they don't come back. You want to have good retail, you have to have good industrial base. It's the industrial sector that builds the retail sector. It's not the retail sector that builds the community. It's the industrial base that builds it, because those are the ones that create the jobs. And then you build upon that to create a retail base, and hopefully, to sustain a retail base. But there's a lot more to it. I mean, when I moved here, we had 77 people move from New York, one of them moved to Elwood City. And you got the worst one, folks. All right? But the bottom line is, they moved because they didn't know our school district, they didn't know the people, they didn't want to live in a small town, they want to live in Upper St. Clair, and Bethel Park, and Pittsburgh. But the community has to build and has to understand what the real needs are, and then we can build. I'm agreeing with her. I fight with Lenore twice a month, I get tired of fighting with her. She says one thing, I say another, neither one of us is right or wrong, is we all have our own opinions of this thing. You know, you want to see a grocery store, you put a grocery store, and I know you'll have Locasanos and Giant Eagle complain, it's going to always have somebody against odds. All I'm saying is that change is always good, but it's got to be changed for the positive, not for the negative.
You were talking about restaurants, and raising the risk, no restaurants open because nobody goes. If you own a business in this town, you'll find out that nobody goes. There's no money in this town. I mean, I would say that 75% of the people that work in this town are probably working for minimum wage or maybe a little above, and who can live on that? Nobody. And you talk about fixing these buildings, by the time you get through the code, and you have to put elevators in for the elderly, why? Who can afford to live there then? There's no money here. And listening to that, like Cranberry, what is Cranberry? What's in Cranberry? Think about it, what's there? Walmarts, stores, restaurants, restaurants, restaurants. 15 years ago, did you hear anybody say, "Let's go to Cranberry"? They said, "Let's go to Pittsburgh." Why can't Elwood be the same as Cranberry? Why can't we have a Super Walmart? Why can't we have restaurants, stores? Why do you go to Cranberry? You go there to shop, don't you? And you go to eat.
Can you tell? I go to eat.
I had a restaurant in this town, and a good friend of mine says, "I'm going to Pittsburgh today." I said, "What for?" He said, "I'm going up there to buy a hamburger." I said, "Yeah?" He said, "They got the best hamburgers in the world, they're $5." I said, "I think I got the best hamburgers in the world, they're about this big, we get fresh meat from Locasanos, we get everything bought from in Elwood City." I said, "It's only $2.50." He goes, "Where's your restaurant at?" I said, "It's just at the other end of town." I said, "We've been there two years." He goes, "Oh." People don't support this town for one. It's just tough.
We've heard that a lot, that people don't support Elwood City, and I think that's changing, and it takes each one of us to change that. With the price of gas, shop here. There's so many things. Go in, look, take the time, it really does make a difference.
Yeah, with all this talk about revitalizing the town and wanting to be like Cranberry, we moved here to be a small town, not a housing plant. So I would like to put up there to remember, to keep some of the small town in this new revitalization, because otherwise, you might as well just bulldozer down Main Street and open up housing plants. The other point is, all your graphics about Main Street and all that, that's great, but I've been to a lot of towns where they put these things in, and you have to make dog legs to go around trees, because they wanted to make it look pretty. You know, and you end up killing yourself for something that's beautiful. You know, if you could keep some of the quaintness, you would succeed everything, and you don't want to go broke making yourself pretty.
Two things I like to say, the first one is, I work in Ambridge, and down in Ambridge, you're focusing on the downtown part, which is good, but there's other areas that if you're going to revitalize the town, and the town is the whole area, down in Ambridge, they have the revitalization of the old mills down there, the Brownfields and so on and so forth, they're tearing them down, and they're going to revitalize them. Now you have some of those areas in this area, and the one that I can think of is like the old airway plant over there, and in that area there, that they're not going to be mills coming into there. Let's revitalize that part as a part of the community of this part. I mean, there's a great land source there, which you don't have downtown, that incorporate it all within itself, and that would be the one thing. And the other thing is, even though Elwood is Lawrence County, I would think that there should be able to get some kind of help from the park, you know, there's a lot of people You know, there's a lot of people here that live in Elwood City but are in the Beaver County part. So I would think as our proportion of what goes to Beaver County, and being that it's Elwood, that I think you should push on the commissioners and such, the legislators from those areas, to help as well, because it's all the Elwood community.
I have a confession to make, that we own one of the ugliest buildings in town. We own District Justice Cartwrights Building. And I think it would be incumbent upon us to help to get the log rolling here a little bit. And we'll commit that when we get a plan together, and we'll work with all of you, that we'll be one of the first to renovate the storefront of District Cartwright Offices Building, so it conforms to sort of a Main Street theme of Elwood.
That's called putting your money where your mouth is, and where we want your wallet, in our hands. Thank you.
Just in following up, something the one lady in the back said. As far as activities for families and such, several years ago, I was in, I believe it was McKeesport, and in that picture that's up on the screen right now, the Missing Tooth, which is actually on the very main block, you could say, of Lawrence Avenue. In an area similar to that, you could develop, what they had was an evening movie night, which sounds a little bit, maybe a little bit, who's going to do that? But they had a small concession, they had a free, you know, current type movie, the whole community turned out. Everybody was very orderly, all the families could come, there was, you know, babies and kids on blankets. You could take that area, which has already got a basement in it, build the facade on the front side, make a stairway that's code and everything, the parking for the back is right there. It would also be a throughway that we could have, go to the Main Street. I believe the borough just bought the property. And that would really develop that as a corridor. We'd have to make sure someone's peeking over there, and make sure the kids aren't hanging out and causing us problems, you know, we have to address that. But it's also something that's fairly family oriented. And as he said, you know, leave it that homey feel, give something to come in here, that you can fill your safe with your kids, you can feel an incentive to come down and say, you know, they'll look forward to that. You get something that's, you know, sort of first run, you could work with somebody to bring that in, have like a community movie night, or live bands as we do. I think every time, they used to have the street closed off after Halloween parade stuff, even the kids come out, you know, some of the ones you wouldn't think they'd be running to a club or an under 21 or something, they'll show up. If you get something a little modern, that they'll, you know, they're going to gravitate to it.
Before I hand the mic over, you commented about a movie night. Community Enrichment's doing one this Friday night at ESB's Community Room. Cinderella Man is being shown this Friday night, I'm sorry, I can't remember the time. If anyone can remember the time, it's free to the, 6:30, it's free to the entire community, no charge. There will be some concessions there, popcorn and that, if you want to bring your entire family. The concessions, you have to buy the popcorn and that, but it's free to the entire community. So Community Enrichment has it, show up there, it's a fantastic movie. At ESB's Community Room.
And the one place that they've shown, it's the Missing Tooth, the borough, like you said, they bought that, they've been working with us on that and other things. They've been so proactive about these types of things. Dan and Dom, and I think you want to talk about where the car dealership is, that hasn't been done with the streetscape. Dan, you want to take it from there?
But I'll pass another piece of information on, because we're talking about the section along Lawrence Avenue that is not included in the streetscape area. And Dom called me in, Maury called me in, there is a section of grant area where the streetscaping is going to be done, a continuation that has been, a continuation of what has been done in the past. They have asked us to be involved with that. It's going to be done differently than what has been done in the past, we're going to try to blend that in to hopefully what EG&amp;G is going to be doing on the remainder. So this is already under a grant that the borough already has, and we're going to try to blend that in, so that from Ninth Street on, an area that is not included in this, is going to be done, and try to bring that in. So it's already under a grant that the city has, and we're going to try to merge the two together, within the constraints of the grant funding they already have.
What we need is more community get-togethers. When they have parades, nobody ever hardly comes to them. When we were younger, it used to be, the parades were always big and so nice to see. We didn't see a lot of cars and a lot of other stuff. We had things after the parades, and we had things for the children to do, like we'd have street dances, we'd be out in the streets, we'd dance, and kids had places to go. Now they've got no place to go. Now, there is a place in town that they could go to, it's noted as the Big House, up behind the Fire Hall, but a lot of the kids don't go there, which they should, because, you know, sometimes the parents think the kids are on the streets, they're doing this, and they're being bad. Well, all kids will be kids. I know. I was a wildie when I was a kid. You can ask Lefty. But we need more community, family things for the children to do, and we all got to get together. The kids can do it on their own, and neither can us or people. And I'm an old person. So we need something here to bring us all together, like we're all family. Not strangers, family. We need something to get us all together. Thank you.
I second that. We've had a couple of businesses actually leave town because the kids don't have actually made it, the business is unattractive. And we need something that'll be available to the teenagers, so that they're not having to hang around the streets. I mean, in one of your displays, you said you ripped out a YMCA, or you renovated a YMCA and you built a business, but still, that YMCA has some type of value also. If we had something where the teenagers could get together, play basketball, racquetball, whatever, it would keep them off the streets, and it would be good for business and good for them at the same time. So we need some type of plan that will span the generations. We're talking about the elderly population and places to stay, and convenience of walking to the local deli, local clinic, local drugstore. Well, we need something for the kids, too, and they all, it all can work together. And in terms of going to Cranberry, I'd rather, I don't like going to Cranberry, it's too much traffic and too much, like you said, the gas prices are going up, and I'd rather be in a small community rather than a large community, and that's the, one of the pluses of Elwood City.
We're not old, we're mature. But I just wanted to say that I think we do need to update a community calendar, because every night of the week, there is something going on in Elwood City. Whether it's a movie night over here, movie night over up there, family nights, but people don't show up because there's always something going on that they can't attend. They're somewhere else. If we post it all together, like maybe at the schools, and put it on the boards, that this is this night of the week, this is this night, and people can plan on that. But we know that from the borough council meetings, there's always something going on, and people can't even attend the meetings. But, you know, different churches, doesn't have to be a church, but there's free movies once a month. Cindy does them, Pam McCrum does them, there's free movies up at Church of God, everything's free. Family nights, the library, they have family night at the library. That's just one of the things, is working together in unity with the community calendar. And I think what Mr. Brazil said, too, about, my husband had always said that if he came into a lot of money, he would do one of the factories, and hire the people to stimulate the economy, hire the local people to build up the economy. But if we're going to do the revitalization, I think we either have to do it all or nothing, because what we started, these little pieces, that aren't kept up, like the tree situation that we had, and everybody said, "Well, who's going to take care of the trees?" It becomes a hassle. It has to be all or nothing. And we do have a lot of mature people who are on checks that, for the most part, that's what we have in this community. And so are we going to stimulate more seniors to come and go that way, like downtown with the senior apartments? That's a steady income. But it's going to take a step of faith to do it all or nothing.
Okay. Thank you. What I'd like is, any other comments? If you would write them down, we'll have no cards for you. The next phase, next, they're going to do a plan, I'm going to tell you, and then we'll have another town meeting to see if you like the plan and what needs to be changed. You've given us a lot of great information tonight. And I want to be able to, earlier, I forgot to mention the Historical Society, because they have been archiving everything we're doing, all the articles, they'll be doing pictures. If you haven't been in the Historical Society, it's tremendous, most small towns don't have it. EG&amp;G were able to go in there and get information and pictures of what the town looked like before, what the buildings looked like before, facades were changed. It is a tremendous thing to have, and they've been wonderful to us. And someone's here tonight that heard about us, interested in what we're doing, and he is from Representative Sean McNally?
McNally.
Thank you. And it's Ted, and I didn't say it before, because I thought my name was hard. Ted McN...
McNally.
Thank you. He's come because this is getting out. Elwood City is starting to have such good buzz about what's happening here, and it's exciting. And we're going to take a couple minutes now to turn the floor over to Wendy Baransfeld, who is the head chair of our fundraising committee, and just to give you a brief idea of what we're doing.
We were asked to dream as if money were no object, and I'm here to tell you that money is the object. But I have good news to report on that front. We have a hardworking finance committee that's begun raising money, because we have actually entered into a contract with EG&amp;G to begin Phase One, which is the design phase, as it was described to you. And we need to raise money to fund that design phase, and also to get our matching requirements for the governmental Main Street program, which is state-funded. To this end, we have a very hardworking committee, and we're now raising the money, since we are a 501(c)(3), a nonprofit designation from the IRS. And the fantastic news that I want to report to you is that we have already raised $45,000 for this design. I'd like to publicly thank our major donors up to this point. Patty Coon, is Patty still around? She's a business owner, she's donated $1,000 to our effort. Nalgo has kicked in $1,500. Keith Benazy and the Eric Ryan Corp. has pledged $5,000. Elwood Group, the parent company of the Elwood City Forge, has pledged $20,000 for a matching challenge grant. And I have tonight an additional outright grant from Elwood Group for $5,000. I'd like to introduce Paul Hoison from ESB Bank, and he has a special announcement that he'd like to make himself.
Thanks, Wendy. Our president, Charlotte Zeuslog, sends her regrets, she would have loved to have been here but had a previous commitment. As most of you know, ESB Bank is committed to Elwood City, you can tell how we handle ourselves in the community, what we've done with our properties. We're behind the project. Charlotte has graciously allowed me to announce that we're going to give $5,000 at this time to help with the seed money, and follow the project, and try and be behind it as much as we can be financially in the future. We think that Elwood City's a great community, and we hope that we get cooperation from everyone else in the community to help this project to turn the city into even a better place to live.
Thanks very much, Paul. That's great. We also want to thank some government entities. The Borough Council of Elwood City has generously kicked in $7,800 as seed money. And finally, the Lawrence County Commissioners have donated $1,200 to the project. So while we're very grateful for these donations, we still have a ways to go. And whether it's $10 or $10,000, we need you to help us. So I have pledge cards here, if you care to pick some up this evening, pass them around to friends, think about how much you might be able to give us yourself, and spread the word, we'd be very grateful. And we also will be beginning our community efforts, you'll be hearing more about other things that we're going to be doing to raise money, and we'd like to have your ongoing participation and ideas about that. So thank you very much.
You have been wonderful. Next time, bring a friend, let's fill this place up to see what EG&amp;G has come up with, with all your comments, and we'll go from there. And thank you so much. And if you want to give us $20,000 tonight, Elwood Group will match it. Chipper, give me $20,000.